The time is seven oh two P M. I'd like to call to order this regular meeting of the mayor in Newington Town Council for Tuesday, May twenty seventh. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Do you need please our roll coffee?
Yes, Councilor Drago.
Here.
Councilor Gonzalez.
Here.
Councilor Mayke.
Here.
Councilor Nagel.
Here.
Councilor Page.
Here.
Deputy Mayor Rada.
Here.
So, Tiniakos.
Here.
Mayor Trist.
Here. All right. Ten minutes. Moving on to a purely agenda. Any changes? Anyone sorry need to make? If not, I'd entertain a motion to approve. Second. Motion by Councilor Ploy, second by Councilor Mayke. Any discussion on approving the agenda? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed or abstained? Motion carries unanimously. All righty. Moving on to the fun part of the night, presentations. Today we have a special presentation. I know it took some time to sort of figure out the best route to go on this and, you know, we're really excited tonight to share and to award the entire assembly, I guess, of food bank volunteers as Newington's twenty twenty four Volunteer of the Year, Volunteers of the Year. Proclamation honoring the Newington Food Bank volunteers are twenty twenty four Volunteers of the Year. Whereas the Newington Food Bank plays a vital role in supporting the health, well-being, and dignity of our community's most vulnerable individuals and families. And whereas the food bank is staffed by an army of forty six volunteers committed to eradicating food insecurity and assisting all Newington residents in need of support. And whereas, in twenty twenty four, the food bank provided seven hundred and ninety one Newington households with over eighteen thousand bags of food over the course of two thousand one hundred and thirty seven visits, ensuring that no Newington resident is left behind. And whereas, through Newington's partnership with the Connecticut Food Share Mobile Truck, the food bank volunteers serve an additional three thousand ninety two people in need, both from Newington and surrounding communities. And whereas, last year, the selfless volunteers committed a total of one thousand eight hundred and thirty three hours of their personal time to the food bank for food handling, monitoring, and distribution. And whereas, the volunteers that staff the food bank epitomize the selfless spirit of growth and progress enshrined on our town seal. Whereas, Dr. Martin Luther King once stated, "Life's most persistent and urgent question is, what are you doing for others?" And whereas, the forty six food bank volunteers will never need to wonder about how they can answer Dr. King's question. Now, therefore, be it resolved that the Newington Town Council hereby recognizes the Newington Food Bank volunteers as twenty twenty four Volunteers of the Year, dated this twenty seventh day of May, twenty twenty five. Congratulations. We have a motion.
Second.
Motion, second by Deputy Mayor Rada. Any discussion from councilors on this? Councilor Drago.
Oh, yeah. I was so pleased to see this this resolution and the Volunteers of the Year because the food bank relies on a lot of individuals, organizations, and businesses to donate the physical goods, the cans, the pies, the boxes, whatever. But they wouldn't be able to get these staples to the people in need without the food bank volunteers. So, because I know, you know, from the few times I've been able to assist, you have to collect the donations, you have to record them, you have to organize it, you have to look for the expiration dates, you have to inventory, you have to clean, um, you have to distribute. So I know the Human Services leadership is so thankful and grateful to all the volunteers, these forty six volunteers, that you choose to donate your time and energy, which is limited to such a worthy cause, and to help ease food insecurity in our own community. So I want to thank you on behalf of all the town who aren't able to be here because you do make a difference in the daily lives, the daily lives. Every time somebody grabs that that container of food or that gift card or whatever, it makes their day a little easier. So I think this is a great this was a great nomination and I'm so glad that it's been awarded. So congratulations to all.
Thank you, counselor. Councilor Ploy.
Thank you, Mayor. Ditto to Councilor Drago and all the words that she she said. I'll just say, you know, a lot of the folks that are using the services that our volunteers are extending are in moments of shock or crisis. They've never used the food bank before. They're coming maybe with a lot of shame or guilt or stigma. And for they for them to be greeted by volunteers with smiling faces and open arms and a welcoming attitude and empathy and listen to them, you know, because it's also about being able to connect with people in that moment, that makes such a huge difference for folks while they're receiving those services. So you folks do a remarkable job remarkably well in our town. And it's unfortunate that I think more and more over the next months, and we saw this certainly with the cuts to meals on wheels and congregate meals, but we're going to see it more perhaps sooner than later, that your services are going to be in that much more high demand. But just know that as a town, we are so deeply grateful for the work that you folks do to support this program and are excited to support you in continuing to deliver those services. So thank you so, so much.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Gonzalez.
Carol, you and your department are absolutely amazing. On a personal level, after my divorce, I'll never forget the first day that I had to walk in and use that food pantry. And I was crying, crying and embarrassed, and I saw somebody I knew. And the people there were just so amazing, and you always are. You all go above and beyond, and the services are so needed in town. And I can't thank you enough for what you guys do. You guys are amazing, absolute angels. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Deputy Mayor Rada.
Yes. Echoing what's already been said, excuse me, but also just thinking about the people that do come forward, you know, Counselor Gonzalez just mentioned a personal experience, but you never know. Excuse me. We never know who or when there may be a need. The level of service, I'm looking at seven hundred and ninety one households, visits, eighteen thousand bags of food, the collaboration with Connecticut Food Share to make all this possible and getting the word out to the community so that residents feel as though there is a place where they can go and and they can maybe assist with a bag of food or some cans of beans, a turkey at Thanksgiving. And all of these numbers really speak to the empathy and the support of all of you and all of the volunteers, making people feel comfortable to walk through those doors. We we don't, we don't know, we don't hear the stories, but we can only imagine the differences that this makes, not only at that specific moment, but over the course of somebody's life. So thank you so much.
Counselor Mayke.
Well, I'd like to thank, congratulate the volunteers who put in so much time and effort to do this. I volunteering is never easy because it means you have to get up and go to the place and and you're on a schedule and you have to do the work and you have to be there on a regular basis. But but these forty six people do this on a regular basis for no money. No pay, they just they do it out of the goodness of their heart. And I think that's amazing in a town that's known for volunteerism, that these people do this. I also want to thank those people who donate to the food bank. Because unless we have food to distribute, there's no need to have forty six volunteers. But we seem to always have food on the shelves, even in the lean in the lean months when it's, you know, not the holiday season, that when we're all in a generous mood. We still have food on the shelves. And I also want to thank the leaders, you folks who who manage and and coordinate those volunteers to make sure that there's people to to staff the food bank. It's a major undertaking. I've been there a few times and watched. It looks like organized chaos to me. There's there's stuff flying in the air and there's people coming in and going out and it looks like chaos to me, but it's organized and 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 it's it's well-run. And I appreciate your efforts that you do on behalf of all of us to make us a better town and make and make these people who need this food bank and and depend on this food bank for sustenance to make us be able to provide the service. So I would congratulate everybody who's involved.
Counselor. Counselor Nagel.
I'd like to add my congratulations and thanks for all you do every day and not only human services, but those who donate and those of you that are intricate parts of this process, which was mentioned earlier, that many don't realize how intricate it is to to first hope you get the food, to transmit it, to get it to certain places, to organize, to eventually get it to the people who need it, let alone making them aware that that this is available, which our residents of Newington are so thankful that you're you're able to provide on a consistent basis. Food is a is a basic need, that's obvious. And it is something that becomes more and more apparent that people need and their funds don't seem to be available as much as they used to be, to provide them in different ways. So you do a valuable service, your whole group does a valuable service of caring without expecting something in return. And we're so happy to be able to to show this form of thanks on behalf of everyone that is involved in in this process behind the scenes. It means so much and it exemplifies as to what a wonderful town this is, that people thanklessly give their time and their effort to provide basic needs for all residents of the town who happen to be in a in a time of need. Many people won't admit it certain times, they they need the service that you're providing. I know there are few examples in my neighborhood, people who happen to say to me, who you wouldn't think would would have to take care of this because of financial or or different kinds of problems they happen to have at a basic time. And you you're always there. And we hope that you always will be there and be caring and you know that we we all support you in many different ways, be it food or be it appreciation in the way that the members of this council are expressing tonight. So thank you so much. Keep it up. We always have your back.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Tiniakis.
Everyone has said a lot already and I echo all of it. So just thank you guys for doing what you do. And when the volunteers come in, please make sure that they they know that their efforts are acknowledged and and say thank you for me.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Page.
Thank you, Mayor. Yes, also. Thank you so much. Your blessing for our town, all of the volunteers. We appreciate you. And it does cause us to wonder when corporations are making record profits, why we have seven hundred and ninety or so families needing the food bank and thousands more a paycheck away from losing everything. So that's for another day. Thank you very much, though.
Thank you, Counselor.
Thank you. I think, you know, is the is is really kind of the theme from up here. Feeding the hungry is probably the most selfless thing you could do in terms of taking care of a need for for the public. And when you think about like a need and what people need, it's not to go hungry, and we know the effects that hunger causes on people and spirals for the rest of their life. So being able to provide as much as you do is a miracle. Seven hundred and ninety one Newington households, it's about six, it's over six percent of the households in Newington, to put that in perspective. I mean, you know, you may think, you know, you look at Newington and you think, oh, this suburb outside of Hartford, they don't have the problems that you see in cities, but it's a considerable number of people in our community who are hungry. And being able to fulfill that need in our community is is so valuable. It's it be you can't even quantify it. So I joined everyone else here in gratitude for all of the efforts that your volunteers have put forward and, you know, we want to keep up in any way we can. So, you know, thank you and keep it up. Appreciate it. Thank you, thank you, thank you.
We had a motion and a second. Any further discussion from council on this? And none? All those in favor? Motion carries nationally. Congratulations.
Thank you very much. Thank you for the support.
Thank you.
Thank you.
About a month, if you were to be where it's at.
If you'd like to, yeah, absolutely.
My name is Pam Wasick and I am the financial coordinator of the food bank also. I've been coordinating it for, I don't know, maybe eight years following Carol Abrek, who's the director now. And when I first started working in the department, I didn't realize how we could all complete and accomplish what what we do in our department until I actually started working in the department about thirteen years ago. Newington, I have found consistently that Newington is an incredible town. It has so much support, and I heard that today. And it it starts from the top all the way down to to the different departments. And, you know, you're from the top and you've showed so much support in volunteering, you know, for our our food bank, our holiday programs. So for you honoring our volunteers in the way that you have, it's incredible. So I want to thank you very much for all the kind words that you did say, because that's how I feel about our volunteers as well and about our town. So thank you so much. I appreciate that.
Thank you. Anybody else in the room would like to offer comment? Please feel free to come on up. If not, now forever hold your pee.
Thank you guys so much for everything. Thank you. Thank you for really a hundred thousand times. Thank you.
Moving along. Next on the agenda is proclamation recognizing June as LGBTQ plus Pride Month in Newington.
Counselor Ward. Thank you, Mayor. I just have a one question. I know that and it's not all that important, but last year, when we passed this same resolution, we amended it at council just to add IA plus throughout, so it would read LGBTQIA plus throughout. So I just suggest that when you read it, we we make that change just for consistency's sake.
Certainly, if you could.
So that would be in, would you like me to read through?
No, I see where the spots are. If you could just refresh me on what the IA stands for, because I have to read it out in the second one.
Yep, so I, absolutely, I is for intersex.
Okay.
And A is for asexual.
Okay, great. All right. That's good with me. All righty. I will do the proclamation now. Honoring the acknowledging Pride Month, that starts you first. Proclamation of the Newington Town Council. Whereas, the Town Council of Newington welcomes and encourages diversity and inclusion for all members of our community. And whereas, June is the nationwide month to recognize the contributions of the lesbian, gay, bisexual, transgender, queer, intersex, asexual plus community, LGBTQIA plus community. And whereas, celebrating Pride Month raises awareness and provides support and advocacy for the LGBTQIA plus community. And is an opportunity to become educated, engage in dialogue, strengthen alliances, and build understanding. And whereas, despite remarkable progress towards acceptance and equality, members of the LGBTQIA plus community continue to face discrimination, intolerance, and hate. And whereas, by protecting the rights of every individual, we enhance and strengthen the value of everyone throughout our entire community. And whereas, individuals of this town who identify as LGBTQIA plus have made and continue to make vital contributions to every aspect of our town. And whereas, we affirm our support for LGBTQIA plus residents in our community and stand with them to protect their civil rights and their ability to live openly, equally, and without fear. Now, therefore, be it resolved that the Newington Town Council recognizes the month of June, twenty twenty five, as lesbian, gay, bisexual, transgender, queer, intersex, asexual plus, LGBTQIA plus, Pride Month in Newington, and urges all residents to build a culture of inclusiveness and acceptance during this month and every month. Be it further resolved, that to mark this recognition, the pride flag, which is widely recognized as a symbol of celebration, inclusion, and support for social movements that advocate for LGBTQIA plus people, will be flown outside the Newington Town Hall throughout the month of June, twenty twenty five, dated in Newington, Connecticut, the twenty seventh day of June, twenty twenty five.
I got it.
Second by Counselor Gonzalez. Any discussion from council? Counselor Tiniakis.
Um, yeah, I'm glad we're doing this again. I thought it was a fun, successful time last year when we did it for the first time. So I'm just glad we're doing it again. And I'm happy to support anyone in the community, just be there, you know. And just let you live your life. Do what you want.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Ploy.
Thank you, Mayor. Just one thing quick. I think it says twenty seventh day of June. We just want to change it to.
Oh. Perfect.
Oh, yeah. Beyond that, I'll just say, I'm also glad that this is happening again this year. I think it's good that we normalize the importance of this and mark this occasion every year. Not because we have a lot of members of the community coming to this table on a routine basis or coming to us even on a routine basis and urging us to do this, but because we have the opposite. We have throngs of people, you know, online, in public, at these meetings, not at these meetings, who will come up to us or or who will hear afterwards do not believe in this kind of inclusion, do not believe in the in the equality of of folks who are a part of this community. So I, as a member of this community, am proud that this council continues to acknowledge the importance of this month, the enduring need to recognize this month, and the work that's still left to do to recognize that full equality of people in our town and across across the country. So thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Deputy Mayor Rada.
Yes, thank you. First of all, I, there is one other typo. Be it further resolved, there is no I in further.
I understand.
Make that change as well. And also, I'm glad that we are doing this again this year and hope that we will continue for every year that's forth. It's a statement that I feel needs to be made and reinforced and a reminder that we stand behind folks and will not tolerate hate, will not tolerate fear mongering and will stand and support every resident and member of our community.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. Counselor Gonzalez.
I am honored and very happy that we are doing this again. As you said, hate has no place in our community and we will not stand for it or tolerate it. Pride Month is the month of June, but we have work to do throughout the whole year. So, thank you. Looking forward to seeing everything else that we can do.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Mayke.
I'll support this motion. I think the key phrase here is to build a cul- a culture of inclusiveness and acceptance during this month and every month. That's the important part, is this month and every month.
Absolutely.
Counselor Page.
Thanks, Mayor. Yeah, when we said the Pledge of Allegiance, we ended with liberty and justice for all. And especially under our current leadership in Washington, rights that have been fought for and died for are being stripped away. Liberties are being stripped away, justice is being denied. People are being told, because of the way they were born, they can't serve our military with pride and distinction, as they have done for so many years. And our queer family and friends are at risk for assault, murder, for denial of of work. And it continues. Newington needs to be, will continue to be, a safe space for LGBTQIA plus community, as is, I believe, Connecticut for the most part. There are places everywhere where there's danger, of course. I don't live it every day, but I know it as an ally through family and friends. And I'm really proud and pleased to do this, make this step and continue to support. And yeah, normalize this. We should normalize that everyone has rights under the flag and under our constitution. And because everyone gets rights, it doesn't, it's not a zero-sum game. It doesn't mean that other people are denied rights, whether that's through marriage or employment or other opportunities. So let's live our Pledge of Allegiance for everyone. Thank you. Thanks, Mayor.
Thank you, Counselor. So, Counselor Nagel.
Thank you. As I did last year, I support this proclamation and what it stands for. We also need to be aware that there are others, as we, some of us on the council mentioned last year, that also deserve recognition every day, not to belittle this, but that can't speak for themselves and others. I know we had a thorough talk last time about about when this came up, about this indeed is a need and is important and that we all support it in a non-political way and that we should continue to do so. But we should also recognize those that are not included here, that also should be noted that are important and are unable to speak for themselves also. I also hope that we follow the same process we did yesterday out of fairness in celebrating this this month and the raising of this flag that we mentioned last time. I won't go into the details of it because we were all in agreement last time and everybody seemed to be happy with the process. So it is something that that is sorely needed and recognized and that indeed fear fear of any kind by anybody in our society here in Newington should not and cannot be tolerated. So I celebrate this. So I'm with other members of the council who have already spoken and who may speak.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Drago.
I'd also like to say that, as Counselor Mayke indicated, that the no one in the community, whether they be from a political perspective, from a sexual perspective, from a race or whatever, should have to tolerate any kind of discrimination or hate. And remember, you know, I'm not a member necessarily of this group, but I'm glad that this brought up out discussions and more and more openness. And I've had some good conversations with people as a result of this proclamation from last year. So I will, I do support this. And also, as Counselor Mayke had said, we've just got to be, we've all got to be better at accepting accepting things that necessarily we might not agree with or believe with, you know, whether whether it be politics, religion, whatever. But we're in this together. And if we don't move forward together and get to the point where we can talk with each other, we're for all this, you know, we're supposedly communication has improved so much, you know, with technology and blah, blah, blah. But we are becoming, I think, more there's a lot more hate out there than there should be. So I I celebrate this. I celebrate the people who are going to be celebrating this month. And I appreciate the conversations. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor.
Um, you know, I would kind of reiterate what I think I said last year in that, you know, this is not a this isn't, Pride Month wasn't invented last year by Newington, Connecticut. This is a this has been ever been going on for a long time. And if any
And if anything, Newington was kind of late to the party. And I think, you know, that we've established this tradition and will continue this tradition is, is, is a great thing. And, uh, that's all I got. Continue moving forward. So, great job, everybody.
Thank you.
We had a motion and a second. Any further discussion on the amended proclamation?
Very amended.
Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed or staying? Our motion carries unanimously. I will present this to you, Town Manager. Congratulations, sir.
To fix and amend.
Before we publish. We are going to do the flag raising Monday morning, correct?
Monday, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, on the second.
Yeah, yeah.
Whenever.
Do you want to, I mean.
Do we want to do that like at nine o'clock or something like that?
Nine thirty, what do you have?
Nine thirty.
Nine thirty?
Nine thirty. Yeah, that sounds good. I'll, just to clarify. Did, I think when we talked about this, does somebody have a flag here?
Yeah.
You do.
No, I haven't. No, I haven't. Yeah.
Last time.
Yep.
Yes, yes. So flag raising is Monday, June 2nd at nine thirty. Okay.
All right. Sorry, I got something in my throat just now. Moving right along, um, next on the agenda is public participation in general. Um, if you're in the room and would like to speak in public participation, please step up to the microphone and state your name and address for the record. You have four minutes. If you are on Zoom, please use the raise hand function. I will alternate between in the room and over Zoom. Come on up.
Thank you. Um, my name is Autumn Cramm. I live on 96 Audubon Avenue. I've been a Newington resident for 13 years and I am a transgender woman. I am also one of the founding members of the Newington Pride Community Group, whose mission is to ensure the visibility, safety, well-being and empowerment of our town's LGBTQ plus community. I applaud this council for voting in favor of raising the pride, pride flag over Town Hall in 2024 for the first time in this town's 154-year history. I ask that Newington continue to acknowledge Pride Month and fly the progress pride flag over Town Hall for the duration of June 2025. I apologize, my, my spiel was intended to be before you voted. So there's, there's a fair amount of appealing, yeah. Okay, um, the town of Newington officially recognizing Pride Month and flying the pride colors over Town Hall can empower queer people to live openly without fear and encourages allies to speak up when they see homophobia or transphobia. The ACLU is currently tracking hundreds of anti-LGBTQ bills nationwide, 10 of which have been introduced in the Connecticut State Legislature. The ultimate goal of these bills is to bar queer people, especially trans people, especially black and brown trans people from equal participation in public life. These bills, even when they do not pass, instill fear, encourage discrimination and oftentimes lead to violence. And I hope you never have to fear for your safety and your human rights the way that I do. In the face of these attacks, we have a chance to set an example for town residents, Connecticut residents and the entire country. We have the chance to stand up and say, our town is a welcoming place where everyone's voice matters. Pride colors flying over a government building could not send a clearer message that Newington values the LGBTQ plus community, that Newington is a safe place, no matter who you are, how you express yourself or who you love, and, uh, not to paraphrase you, uh, Pay, uh, Mr. Page, uh, that Newington includes queer people when we say liberty and justice for all. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else in the room or over Zoom that would like to speak in public participation? Come on up, sir.
Sorry, it takes a while to get up here. Bob Tallard, 32 Edmund Street, Newington. I don't know if this is a question for you guys or the, I'm sorry, the council, I beg your pardon, the council or the TPZ. Uh, cause I know that Gail and, uh, Matt, you're also on the, uh, commit, or not committee, but, uh, liaisons to TPZ. If you have any updates on the apartments and how well they're doing, how well they're filling up. I know that there was some talk about bringing down the prices because they were so high that people can't afford them. Let's face it. Uh, I'm on social security. I couldn't afford any of those apartments. Trust me. My name is not Rockefeller. It's not Carnegie. It's not Musk or Trump. Anyway, so I, I wanted to know if anybody can give me an update and, uh, well, when, when you're through. And also, uh, Mitch, you mentioned, um, the pledge of allegiance. And I just wanted to remind everybody that, um, five years ago, George Floyd was tortured to death by Derek Chauvin. And for nine and a half minutes, I watched that tape and I just, uh, country's pretty sad when a police officer can kill somebody while they're being filmed and not have a problem with it. Pretty sad country. Donald Trump is the sickest S O B on the planet next to Putin. But putting that aside, uh, Trump was rumored to want to pardon Derek Chauvin. And, uh, I don't think there'd be too much, uh, liberty and justice for George Floyd if he was, but the problem is there's also state crimes against, um, Derek Chauvin, which are like 20 years in prison statewide. So even if, uh, Trump pardoned him on the 22 years that the federal government, uh, gave him, the, um, governor of Minnesota's Tim Walz. And he said, he's a Democrat and he said he would not pardon Chauvin. So even if, uh, Trump does pardon George Floyd, uh, he would still spend another 20 years in prison, which would put him at about 65 years old when he gets out. By the way, Tim, I really like that suit and that tie. I really do. And I just, uh, I'm glad there's pushback on the, uh, uh, on what's going on in the world today. There's a lot of evil going on. It's sinister. And you mentioned Pride Month and so forth, and a lot of people are being discriminated because of that. It's, it's too bad that you, people can't be who they are and what they believe in, whether it may be. It's a free country. We have the first, First Amendment that protects people and Fourth, Fifth, Ninth, Fourteenth. And I guess that's about it. I just wanted to get if anybody has any impact or insight into the, um, because the previous administration was extremely corrupt on all the apartments that were put up in the town. I just want to see if somebody knows anything about that. Give me an update. That's it. Thanks very much, folks. Appreciate it.
Thank you. Anyone else in the room or over Zoom that would like to speak in public participation? Oh, come on up. I had just in time.
Mike Waugh, 57 Kits Lane. I assume that the Town Council has no intention of helping the residents of Kits Lane get the CT Transit buses off our street. I was told at the first meeting I came to that somebody would be contacting me, but as of now, I have not heard from anyone. The town, to my knowledge, has not even sent a letter to the DOT requesting them to reroute the buses to the turnpike. Priscilla from DOT told me of all the places the riders were going on the turnpike. Problem is, we don't live on the turnpike. I'm sure if this was happening in council members' neighborhoods, that something would have been tried.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody else in the room or over Zoom that would like to speak in public participation? Going once. All right, we will move on. We didn't have any email correspondence, correct?
No.
Email correspondence. All right. Moving on to number six, remarks by counselors on public participation. I would open it up for counselors. Counselor Bajaco.
Um, Jonathan, I think at the last meeting you gave us an update about Kits Lane.
Yeah, so I, I can, I can tell you everything has happened in the last, um, I don't know, four, four or six months, six, seven weeks since, uh, Mr. Waugh was last here. Um, I continue to have conversations with Priscilla Cotto from the Department of Transportation regarding this matter. Uh, they have a, a, what I believe is called service, service review committee, I think they call them, which goes through and reviews, you know, any complaints about lines and ridership and those types of things. And this is a matter that is, I believe, I, 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 it was either at the end of this month or early June, they were going to have this, this review services committee, um, that the DOT, the committee members are well, very familiar with Mr. Waugh's complaint. Um, you know, I think there were, uh, off the top of my head, I want to say there were something like 50, I believe, uh, riders getting, getting off at the two stops on Kit, Kits Lane. Um, you know, I, ultimately I, I'm not a transportation engineer, so I, I, I can't determine what the best route is or why, um, the, uh, uh, the bus would go down Kits as opposed to continuing on to, to, uh, to the turnpike. And, and just to clarify, it's only the southbound, um, 125 that goes on Kits. The northbound one does not. Um, so I mean, I'm just, we're taking our cue from them. Ultimately, they have the authority to determine. I mean, the, the town doesn't control CT Transit. There is no, there is no like veto right that we have over, over routes. I mean, obviously we have collectively, we have pressure that we can exert on them if we think collectively that it is in the interests of our businesses and residents to not have the, the, the route go down Kits Lane. But because we're not transportation engineers, I don't, I'm not one and we don't have any on staff. I don't know, I don't feel comfortable sort of dictating to, to Connecticut Transit or DOT what, what an appropriate route is or is not. So I'm just waiting for any sort of guidance from, for DOT, but ultimately it's their decision to make. Um, but I don't have any data to support that it's good or bad the way the route is now. So I.
Just a clear, a clear, oh, sorry, sorry.
Um, no, because I have something else. Well, just continuing on this, um, it's, it's 50 riders and maybe on your conversations with Priscilla or whatever, but if there's 50 riders, I'd be curious to see, are they all residents of Kits Lane or are they employees?
Oh, no, almost certainly they're employees of the business.
Businesses are more located on the Berlin Turnpike.
Yeah, that's almost certainly, but I mean, again, I don't, I'm just, that's all I know is just those data points about.
Exactly. So to me it makes more, I mean, they, those workers have to actually walk, whereas if.
Correct, but then they may have to cross the street like, and then it might be a day, I, I, I dangerous intersection. So there, there, there's multiple variables going on that, where we don't have act, we don't, you know, we're not sitting there.
I do think are things to bring up in the conversations with Priscilla, including the fact.
But, but again, Gail, I'm not a transportation engineer. They are a team of transportation engineers. I would have to rely on their expertise.
I do get it, but I think sometimes facts can be brought to their attention that they might just questions think about. So, I mean, I think that's something that you could, you know, bring to their attention. And also the fact that, and I know you don't, or we don't have control over, um, the routes, but you know, it is a town road versus a state road, um, and particularly since it isn't really serving any of the residents per se on that street. That again, it's just something that you could just mention and I know you have no control, you know, you're not an engineer. Um, okay, that's a number one. And then just number two, just to address, uh, Mr. Tallard. I had, I don't even know where I met him, but the manager of 3333, those apartments there, I believe it was like either 72 or 73% of the, um,
75.
Or 75 are, um, percent of occupancy. And the Pike, I think the other one, that's what it's called, is a little less. It was between, you know, like around 60 or the high 50 or, or 60% occupants.
Thank you, Counselor Bajaco. Counselor Gonzalez.
Um, I just wanted to respond to Autumn. Thank you very much for coming up and speaking. I don't know that everybody is brave enough to come up and, and, and talk. So you are a voice for people. Thank you very much. You should be proud of yourself.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Pla.
Thank you, Mayor. Like Counselor Gonzalez, I want to thank you, Autumn, for coming. It was beautiful. Um, and, um, I think what's really important about that, like Counselor Gonzalez said, is that there are a lot of people watching that who are going to take a lot of courage, uh, in coming to these meetings moving forward and speaking up and sharing why it's so important to, um, take steps like this. So, um, you've made a real impact just in being here and I just want to thank you for that. Um, that is also my recollection. Counselor Bajaco, it was, uh, like high 50s. I think I remember 57%. I imagine that's outdated. That was several months ago for the Pike. So it's probably the high 50s, low 60s, I'm guessing, but that is also my recollection for, 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 um, Mill Yard, is that what it's called? And, uh, and that's all I have.
Thank you. Thank you, Counselor.
Counselor Page. Yeah, thanks, Mayor. Um, thanks for the updates on the apartments, everybody. I, I didn't have that data. So, and thanks for the question. Um, as for the buses, I, I, I know sometimes residents individually come to us, uh, to Mr. Waugh's point with concerns about any number of issues and you need to be heard and seen and responded to out of respect to you as a resident of this town. And we work for you. And at the same time, as the town manager referenced, whenever there's, um, any policy that's put together uh, in looking at its positive impact, but also any potential negative, um, uh, consequences, that change would need to be done with data that's objective and that would drive any policy change from the state or with any recommendation we might have forthcoming. And so that sometimes is really frustrating to individual residents when we are affected by either noise or pollution or traffic or any other issue. And I, I wasn't sure specifically what it is that was upsetting you most, but I, I'm open to hearing that and hearing, talking more with you after this meeting or it's going to be late. So maybe tomorrow, but, but I can't dialogue now, but I'm just responding to you out of respect. And, and it may mean that once the data is gathered that the bus route wouldn't change, it might mean that it does change. And I'll, I'll tell you in full transparency, I'm a very strong advocate of public transportation throughout the town, buses, trains, uh, any other form that we can have. And I would love to have more bicycle and pedestrian friendly streets too. And I know there are a lot of hardworking people working on that. So please be patient and understand that there could be a change, but it needs to be driven by the data collectively and aggregate by, by all sources. And then let's keep talking about it. Um, and then the last I would also just say, Autumn, thank you, uh, for your, your words. And I feel honored that we, we're kind of thinking the same thing. So that's cool. And I'll see you at the next event. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Um, I just wanted to, uh, sort of touch on the questions that Counselor Bajaco had before, just to clarify, so when we, we've, we've, we've been in communication with Priscilla at DOT, we've expressed our concerns about the situation. Have we requested, we've requested a review on the route?
I, 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 I'm struggling a little bit on this one because I don't know what the concerns are. I don't, I don't, I know Mr. Waugh has expressed concerns about traffic on the street.
Right.
There was concern specifically about the, the, at one point there were, there was a bus that picked up people waiting on his front yard instead of going to a designated bus stop.
Sure.
Other than that, there's concerns about, I think generalized concerns about speeding of the buses. Obviously the buses are monitored for speed and the drivers are, you know, held to that. That's a matter for the police department as well to make sure that the buses are operating in a safe manner. Uh, but that would be true whether it was on the turnpike or it was on Kits Lane.
Right.
As far as there being increased traffic on Kits Lane as a result of the buses, I don't know that that by itself, it's either increased traffic on the Berlin Turnpike or increased traffic on Kits Lane. I can't speak to, and none of us can speak to why, why DOT chose or Connecticut Transit chose this route in the first place. So, un- until their experts, their traffic engineers can say, on second thought, this doesn't make sense from a circulation or a, a, or a, or a. on second thought, this doesn't make sense from a circulation or a, or a, or a safety standpoint or whatever it is. I'm not sure exactly what it is the town's position should be on this. I don't think that we want to have a blanket prohibition on or a blanket position that we don't want CT Transit buses on town roads as opposed to state roads.
No, I.
So absent that, I'm not really sure what the.
No, I'm not. I'm just looking for more specific.
So that, so that's what I'm waiting for from Priscilla. So they're still waiting on, she's going to have a staff recommendation to this committee.
Right.
This committee is going to deliberate it and make, you know, determination whether the route should stay the same or be moved. I know that they've, they've spoken with Mr. Wa many times. They're very familiar with his concerns. So, you know, I'm just.
My point is, I just wanted to make, I want to understand, we are working on this. And it is something that we are actively engaging with the DOT on quite frequently. Recognize that the, that we don't get the response in the time we miss that we would like. But we, we have to go through the process that we have to, we are working on it, and we're looking into it, and we're going to follow the data the best we can, but we are addressing it. It's just not happening as quick as we would like, and I apologize about that, but I wish, you know, if government was fast, it would be, it would be a little different society. And unfortunately, it's, it's just slow, and we're dealing with two governments on this, but we are looking at it, and we're going to continue to engage and hear what we have to say, but we're going to follow the data. We can't engage, not dialogue back and forth. There's no, it's not public, it can't get in the record. Sure, no, yeah. Appreciate it. Thank you. Any other remarks from council? We will move on to old business. Consideration of old business. First on the list, item A, tax incentive policy. I guess I'll kick it off on this. I'm happy that we are doing this. I think, you know, it, it's providing that kind of North Star and that kind of guidance, it just makes everyone's lives easier. So I think it's great that we're doing this. I would like, personally, I don't know if others feel the same way, I'd like a little more time just to kind of continue to review it to make sure that it fits what we like. But I, I think this is great, and I'm glad that we're taking steps on this. And I'll open it up with any other, other councilors have any remarks or comments or questions. Councilor Jacob.
Since I was the one that talked about some of this before, I'm glad to see that some changes were made, but and I think from reading this through, my concern was that we were only going to be focused on areas around TOD and opportunity sites and would not consider other areas of the town. I mean, I suppose it doesn't matter, says other areas of town that have historically been negatively impacted by underinvestment. I find that phrase kind of cumbersome and complex. My whole point is I just want to make sure that should an opportunity come along, that is really great that the finance, you know, planners, the town planner, the council thinks would be really good, like if we got, I don't know, some brand new business coming to town, but they wanted to locate, you know, in the center of town, we wouldn't say, well, no, we can't give you an incentive because, you know, there's already investment in the center of town. I just want to make sure that we will consider everything. We'll give priority to the TOD sites and the opportunity sites, but there's always room for an exception, and I just want to make sure.
Yeah, so I mean, we didn't include the map in this, this, in this packet, but the map, there was opportunity zones, opportunity sites, and and something else. And so you had, and off the top of my head, I can't remember them, but it covers, it covers everything. It covers the Berlin Turnpike, it covers the town center, it covers the little pockets like New Britain Avenue and Maple Hill, and it covers that, that area in the south of New Britain Avenue as, as you come in from New Britain, that industrial area. So it's a, it's a hodgepodge of both industrial sites, town center, Berlin Turnpike, it's really, and then, and so that catch-all that would be added was just for little pockets that maybe we, that just, just didn't fit into the, into the, all those various areas.
Because, you know, we are saying that there's a redevelopment of a distressed or blighted or abandoned, it could be in the middle of a very thriving center, but we wouldn't walk away from this.
Yeah, I, I think, yeah, I, I think it does. I'm pretty, pretty confident that that works.
One other question. Under section two eligibility.
Yep.
Paragraph A, it says to acquire an interest in real property in Newington or with any party owning, we're proposing to acquire an interest in airspace in Newington. It's airspace.
It's airports. It's the way the law is written.
Do you want to do it, Daniel?
Sure. It's the way the law is written. Connecticut General Statute twelve dash sixty-five B, and that's primarily for airports. So you can own interest in airspace. It's a, it's a law.
Is that really relevant to us?
It's not, but it almost has to be in there because of the way the law is written. And the other thing too is, I think by way of the, the priority areas, I think it's a, we worded it so that it would be priority will be given. Rather than, because we didn't want to, because we didn't want to just say it's those areas, so we, we kept it very generic, like, very generic in saying that priority will be given to those areas so that we didn't just, you know, close ourselves off to not being able to have other areas in the town.
Thank you.
Yep.
Councilor Teniacus.
Yeah, John, can you send us a link to the past policy that we've had to decide? I want to see the parallels between the two. Thank you.
Councilor Page.
I'm good. Thank you.
Any other comments or questions on this? I guess I think we're going to leave it on the agenda for another meeting at least.
Sure.
Continue to work through it. Deputy Mayor Rata, start it.
I'm just wondering if Danielle had anything, I don't want you to get too far. You had anything else that, that might help clarify or anything that you felt needed to be identified as, as we're meeting through this and trying to digest this. I just wanted to give you an opportunity.
Absolutely. I can, I can make sure, I can send Jonathan the statutes, that way you guys have them. The different statutes that are written out in here. That way you can kind of see what we're seeing in the assessor's office by way of what's allowed, what's not allowed. And that might help you guys, you know, to kind of see it from the perspective of why it was written the way it was written. Absolutely.
Thank you.
That might help. Yeah.
Wait, don't go. The councilor Maggie has a question.
I just want to thank you for your work on this. This is, uh, well-written, I think, and, and and, and a long time overdue. I think it's a pretty, pretty comprehensive document, and I, I appreciate your efforts on it.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. I like all that.
Thank you so much.
Our next meeting. Appreciate it. All right, so we're leaving that. All right, moving on to item B, year-end appropriation transfers to twenty forty-four, twenty twenty-five. Councilor Page, can you read that first resolution?
The certification?
Yeah, the whole thing I got.
All righty. Certification, certification, in accordance with section eight zero eight of the town charter, I hereby certify that there exists free from encumbrances in the following appropriations in general fund. The amounts listed below, account number nine six zero, title contingency amount forty-two thousand one hundred fifty. Account two one zero, title police full-time salaries amount one hundred thousand dollars by Janet Murphy, Director of Finance. Resolve that the Newington Town Council hereby transfers the above certified funds to the following accounts in the general fund. Account number one one zero, title Town Council, amount one hundred fifty dollars. Account number one seven zero, Town Clerk, amount seven thousand dollars. Account number two three two, Fire Department, twenty-seven thousand dollars. Account two five zero, Street Lighting, eight thousand dollars. Account nine four zero, Employee Benefits, one hundred thousand dollars. Be it further resolved that the town manager is authorized to make additional transfers from unencumbered balance appropriations within the general fund to the administrative, municipal, and police pension trust funds in an amount not to exceed three hundred thousand dollars.
My Councilor Page, second of my Councilor Plouffe. Any discussion on this? Seeing none. All is in favor? Any opposers abstain? Motion carries unanimously. Moving on to item C, CIP transfers.
We have one more resolution.
That's, that's a CIP one.
Oh, I'm so sorry. I didn't hear what you said.
My mistake. Would you please read your resolution?
I'd be happy to. Certification, in accordance with section eight oh eight of the town charter, I hereby certify that there exists free from encumbrances in the following appropriation in the CIP fund, the amount listed below. Account number three one one nine zero dash eight eight zero one five, title Anna Reynolds Improvement Planning, amount thirty-one thousand three hundred ninety-five dollars. Account number three zero zero two dash four nine nine nine, title CIP Fund Balance, amount sixty-five thousand thirty-seven dollars. Janet Murphy, Director of Finance. Resolve that the Newington Town Council hereby transfers the above certified funds to the following CIP Fund Accounts. Account number three one one seven zero dash eight eight one zero one, title Library Expansion, amount thirty-three thousand four hundred and thirty-two dollars. Account number three one one eight zero, Pool Evaluation, amount sixty-three thousand dollars.
Second. Your Deputy Mayor Rata, second by Councilor Nagel. Any discussion on these? Seeing none. All those in favor? Opposers abstain? Motion carries unanimously. Moving right along.
This next one, the appointment of auditor, there, there is no, there's no resolution here, so I think we can just, just table it until the next time. It's a very simple resolution, but we don't have.
Absolutely. So appointment of auditor, we're going to leave on the agenda? Anybody have any questions about it? Since we're here? No? All right.
Are we just putting it up on the screen?
Yeah, if you could do that, it'd be perfect. All right, okay. I don't know why I didn't get in the. Bring Councilor Plouffe. Can you read the resolution? Susan's great.
You saved the day, Susan.
There you go.
Thank you.
Resolved, per section six ten of the Newington Town Charter, the firm of Clifton Larson Allen LLP, formerly Blum Shapiro, is hereby appointed as auditor for the town of Newington for the fiscal year ending June thirtieth, twenty twenty-five. Said firm agrees to file a complete report on or before December fifteenth, twenty twenty-five.
Second.
All right, motion by Councilor Plouffe, second by Councilor Podraco. Any discussion on appointment of auditor? Seeing none. All those in favor? Any opposers abstain? All right, motion carries unanimously. Thank you for the assistance. You saved the day. All righty. Moving on to item E, Amendment to Personnel Rules. Councilor Gonzalez? Please read that resolution.
Seventeen.
There you go.
Okay, the little one. Resolve that section nine dash seven and section nine dash eighteen of the town's personnel rules and regulations be amended to allow employees to use personal leave and vacation leave in less than half-day increments.
Second.
Motion by Councilor Gonzalez, seconded by Deputy Mayor Rata. Any discussion on this, further discussion? None. All those in favor? Any opposers abstain? Motion carries unanimously. All right. Right through here to item F, Horrible Housing Needs Study. Kind of written like a proclamation, so I guess I'll read it. Motion, that's the wrong one. All right. Whereas the Newington Town Council established a Newington Housing Needs Study Committee, the committee, with the adoption of resolution two zero one four dash five four on May thirteenth, twenty fourteen, to formulate and carry out a survey to determine housing needs within the town by November thirteenth, twenty fourteen. Whereas the committee was never disbanded upon completion of that task. Whereas the committee was utilized in twenty twenty to coordinate the adoption of an affordable housing plan pursuant to the requirements of Connecticut General Statutes eight dash thirty J. Is it H, is it J or is it G? But is it supposed to be?
Whatever.
Whereas the twenty twenty-one, twen- to twenty twenty-six Newington Affordable Housing Plan was adopted by the Town Council in May twenty-fifth, twenty twenty-one. Whereas pursuant to Connecticut General Statutes eight dash thirty J, Newington is required to update its affordable housing plan by May twenty-fifth, twenty twenty-six, and then every five years thereafter. The Town Council appropriated funding for the town planner to undertake this review in the twenty twenty-five, twenty twenty-six fiscal year. Now therefore be it resolved that the charge of the committee be amended to authorize the committee to coordinate the development of the town's affordable housing plan with assistance and support from the town planner.
Second.
Motion made by me, seconded by Councilor Plouffe. Any discussion? None. All those in favor? Any opposers abstain? All right. Motion carries unanimously. All right, that concludes our old business. Moving right along to tax refunds. Councilor Teniacus, you read that resolution.
Resolve that probably tax refunds in the amount of three hundred thirty-six dollars and forty-five cents are hereby approved in the individual amounts and for those named on the request or refund of overpayment of taxes certified by the revenue collector, a list of which is attached to this resolution.
Second. Motion by Councilor Teniacus, seconded by Councilor Nagel. Any discussion on this? Seeing none. All those in favor? Any opposers abstain? All right, motion carries unanimously. I think we have no minutes for the previous meetings to review. Sorry, Kim and Dave.
I think it's a labor issue. They're taking work. I'm going to file a grievance.
Moving on, we, to resignations and appointments. We do have one resignation. Of ours or?
I don't know if it's C.
Councilor Maggie, you want to read that resolution?
Sure. Resolve, the Newington Town Council hereby accepts the resignation of Noel Stam Jr. as a member of the Library Renovations Edition Public Building Committee in accordance with the correspondence received on May nineteenth, twenty twenty-five and effective immediately.
Motion by Councilor Maggie, seconded by Deputy Mayor Rata. Any discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor? Any opposers abstain? Motion carries unanimously. Moving right along to new business. Item A, reappointment of AMR for emergency medical services.
Yeah, so briefly, the EMS committee has been talking over the past few meetings about renewing a contract with AMR. AMR provides emergency medical services between the hours of, I believe, six AM and six PM during weekdays. They also separately have a contract directly with NIMs for paramedic services. And they also provide us with emergency, emergency medical dispatch services as well at no cost. The, the EMS committees, the town's EMS committee's recommendation was just to extend the contract for just one additional year, the two, in order to align the town's contract with AMR with NIMs, I never say it right, but Newington Emergency Medical Services contract with AMR. So they both expire on, on June thirtieth, twenty twenty-six. Originally, AMR, I think it asked for a three-year extension, but, you know, the goal was just to, to align them for now, and then maybe in the future, we can have a longer contract. But otherwise, I know the EMS committee spoke at length about response times for AMR, and they were satisfied with the level of service that we in, in Newington are getting. So that was the recommendation. If, if, if council has no objections at the next meeting, you can authorize me to enter into new, new contract.
Any questions from Councilor Podraco on this? Councilor Maggie?
So there's no other changes to the contract, substantive changes? Correct, yep. Just, just the. Just, just the term, yep. And so now both contracts will come due at the, the same time? Correct. And it benefits us because you do both at the same.
And it benefits us because you do both at the same time?
I, I guess that the EMS's committee was just be easier to renegotiate both in one fell swoop.
Maybe this makes sense, yes.
Thank you, Councilor.
Okay, thank you.
Councilor Taniakis?
Yeah, I was able to speak to Chief Mangan for a very quick moment over the weekend and I talked to him about this and there's something that they want. Um, which I assume from the same position, I was just gonna help them in negotiations if they're kind of package dealing uh, both contracts, like maybe they could work something out in their favor in that degree, but he's a hundred percent on board with this, so.
Thank you, Councilor. Any other questions or comments from council? All right, seeing none, we'll move on to item B, Request to Rename Twenty Eight Garfield Street.
I think I can see this one up.
Yeah, sure, pretty straightforward, yeah.
Twenty Eight Garfield Street is also OFI. Their lease is up June twelfth, I think. And we would like it to have our name somewhere on there, so this is going to be referred to the Facilities Naming Committee. You guys are charged with finding the absolute best name for this building that you can.
We'll entertain all suggestions.
Oh, boy.
They'll be called the Mankys.
Um, and look forward to hearing what you guys come up with on that. Appreciate it. Any questions or comments on that? Councilor Padreco?
I just do have a question, not a question, just a comment for consideration in terms of naming it. Because in my mind, it's hard to name something if you don't know a hundred percent of what the use of the building is gonna be. So before you get too creative or specific in terms of either an individual or whatever, it might be a little, it's be a little bit more generic and it can then be changed at a later time. You know, once we figure out what the, what the building's gonna be a hundred percent used for. Just a comment, thanks.
Thank you. Deputy Marata?
I think Councilor Padreco is reading my mind. I, I will be in touch with Councilor Mackey and Councilor Plour. We are the Facilities Naming Committee and we'll set a date and time to meet and look with a reasonable proposition, a proposal that we can bring to.
We'll have to measure the space for the sign-in. How much would it cost per letter?
Yes.
M A N K E. Unless it's a digital.
I like the idea that the prince was just use the town seal and won't put any name.
Formerly known as OFI.
Formerly known as OFI.
All right, yeah.
We'll look forward to hearing on that.
Uh, moving along to item C, Administrative, Administrative Group Classification and Taking.
Yeah, and this is just an administrative thing, I guess, assigned every year to recognize that beginning with the new fiscal year, what we do pay ranges to reflect the, uh, the increase in the adopted budget.
Very good. Any questions? On this for, for council? All right, seeing none. We will move, that concludes new business for tonight. Um, what's going on? Nothing, nothing at all. Uh, moving on to item twelve. Written Oural Communication from the Town Manager, Other Town Agencies and Officials. Any updates?
Yeah, there's two things I wanna bring to your attention. Um, the first one is last week, uh, the town issued five million dollars worth of general obligation bonds. Two million of that was for this building, just wrapping up some of the reimbursements for this building. Uh, and then three million dollars of it was for Anna Reynolds, the closeout of Anna Reynolds. Um, the two million dollars for this building closeout was technically taxable bonds um, because it's been more than three years since, um, the first funds were expended. Um, the IRS has a three-year rule, so that resulted in slightly higher interest rates or a higher yield than you would get with tax exempt municipal bonds. Uh, but the, the sale was a success and the, the yields are ticked, true interest costs, which is really the effective average weighted yield of the bonds was in line with what a double A plus uh, community such as ours would, would get. So no surprise there. But I do wanna highlight, and this is sort of an add a girl to Janet, um, the town's double A plus credit rating from Standard and Poor's was reaffirmed with a stable, with a quote unquote, stable outlook. Um, S and P in their, in their report, which is technically proprietary, so we can't post it on our website, highlighted things like the diverse and growing tax base of the town, obviously our proximity to, um, to, um, to Hartford and the economic centers there, as well as conservative budgeting and financial practices. So that's kind of, obviously, you know, we can't control where we're located, but we can control who our finance director is and she's doing a heck of a job in making sure that we are maintaining our creditworthiness. And it's also, I mean frankly, let's, let's pat everybody on the back. It's a testament to our thirty one thousand residents as well who, um, you know, are, are, are considered collectively very creditworthy. So we're doing something very right, all of us, from, from, from top to bottom. Um, another thing I wanna bring to your attention was about the Cedar Street Sidewalk Project. So we had a public information meeting maybe three or four weeks ago, very well attended. Um, a number of residents from, um, uh, why am I spacing? Vincent Drive, thank you. Vincent Drive at the top of Cedar, that, that standalone isolated neighborhood, um, came and expressed some concerns that the sidewalk project would do nothing to facilitate any sort of connectivity for those ninety five some odd houses back there. Um, Representative Farrar was in the audience. Uh, she had some concerns about what she was hearing, went back DOT, had a couple of follow-up meetings. DOT sharpened its pencils and said, what if we expanded the scope of this project? And essentially, so the, the way that the original scope of the project worked is it would go, the sidewalk would essentially go from Maple Hill slash Old Farms, that intersection with Cedar, all the way to Fen Road on the, on the, on the, on the north side of, of Cedar. Um, there's also at, at that Maple Hill slash Old Farms, there's already a crosswalk there. And then putting, the suggestion was to put for about, I think it's about six hundred feet on the, on the south side, um, running from Vincent to, to, to Maple Hill, a sidewalk there. So basically a five-foot sidewalk with a four, four and a half foot buffer along Cedar, um, including that in the scope of the project, still being able to get to it during, um, during next construction season, twenty twenty six. There's a couple of, you know, question marks. Um, I think most of this stuff can be done within state, uh, right of ways. It might have to be some slight expansion of the easements. Most of it can be done in the existing right of ways. Could be some tree removals, a couple of, a couple of those, those properties could be impacted by having to remove trees that are, you know, right there, sort of four or five feet right off of the edge of the curb. Um, and then there is one or two utility relocations. But what I think the, the direction that DOT wants to go is to expand that. And then, so as part of that, those, those seven or so property owners uh, would be approached in the next couple of months by the, 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 the right-of-way folks at DOT. Just wanna get that on your radar, that's gonna go, go on. Obviously, you know, making sure that those ninety five homes on or just off of Vincent Drive have access to some sort of walkability is, 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 is great. But there's obviously, you know, an impact on those seven houses. So it'd be interesting how that plays out, but I did wanna get that on your radar. That's all I have.
Thank you.
Councilor Padreco?
Yes, I wasn't able to attend the meeting, but I'm just trying to visualize in my mind. So the Vincent, because I had always heard in the past that the people from Vincent wanted a sidewalk going towards the center, but you're saying now.
Well, that's a good question. So actually, there's, there's a part two of this. So, um, so long-term, so as part of this scope, you know, with the available funding, they can add what I just described. There's a sort of a phase two, which is, let's say, twenty twenty nine, twenty thirty, in which you could run the sidewalk basically from Vincent all the way to Willard along the south side, and then you'd have essentially a straight connection from Fen, basically central, all the way to the town center.
Wow.
So that's, but that's the long-term goal. The, the short-term is just.
Short-term simply because of the parameters of funding.
Yeah, the fund, the amount of funding, and I think that the, that's a much longer stretch to get all the way from Willard to.
So that's gonna be from Vincent to Maple Hill, then the people cross the road.
Correct.
From there to Fen Road.
Correct.
And who's responsible for maintaining?
So very good question. So essentially, you have to think of a, of a DOT sidewalk as almost like something that we accept dedication of as a town. So ultimately, we, I mean, so ultimately, the adjacent property owners would be responsible for clearing out of snow and ice, you know, during storms. Obviously, to the extent, you know, branches fall, those adjacent property owners were responsible for moving branches out of the way. Um, the, you know, the town, but they, and, but then moving forward essentially for, you know, in thirty, fifty years, when those sidewalks have to be reconstructed, that would fall into that CIP money that we are, that we allocate for sidewalk reconstruction. We would no longer, there would not be, DOT wouldn't come in every thirty years and, you know, resurface the sidewalks. It would essentially be dedicated to the town.
And then the maintenance from alumni to Fen, since there's no property owners there?
So alumni to Fen, yeah. So that's, so they're at the margins, there's still some details to get worked out about maintenance, but yeah, Bill Demeo is aware of it. He's been talking about some, what do you call them, the cutouts or something, the places to put the extra snow. So that's being, that's being negotiated. Um, but yeah, there will be additional work that, 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 that will fall on the, uh, on the ground script for sure.
So at some point when it's a little bit more finalized, whatever, we can have a little, at a time, Council.
Yeah, absolutely. Like how there's, how all of the details will work.
I think.
Yeah, thanks, Mayor. I appreciate this conversation about sidewalks. For our earlier conversations about buses, I think these are good examples of efforts by this town. And by the state working together for the common good. And, and I understand individuals come out and a person comes out about a bus, or maybe a person comes out about a sidewalk. Now I have to snowblow or shovel that, and I understand that. I think we need to continue to think about what's in the best interest of our community. And sidewalks, especially in that Cedar um, corridor are vital because our quality of life, it's essentially a super high. And I think the common good of those scores of residents on Vincent, I think it's ironic that they installed a walk light.
Yes.
There goes no place.
And it's on a, yeah.
It's just there.
It's sort of a mockery of, of the situation, but hopefully this will be rubbed. And the last thing I'd wanna say is, I wanna thank you, our town manager Jonathan, for, uh, every time I email you, I get a concern from a resident on any topic, an email, a phone call, whatnot, I send it your way and I ask if you or your staff could explore and come up with some response. Um, and you're lightning fast, extremely thorough, you and your staff, credit to all the people who work in this building and throughout the town, uh, we're very, very grateful for your expertise, your professionalism and your leadership. Thank you.
Thank you, Mitch, but I take no credit. It's the staff that, that makes me look good. And then, and then specifically your email from this morning, uh, the fact that Danielle, this was Danielle DiPolino, uh, her, her response was about as thorough and as thoughtful and as well reasoned as you could possibly ask for, so kudos to her, yeah.
Thank you.
Councilor Nagel?
Uh, thank you. And thank you, Jonathan, for not only what Mitch has, has mentioned, but also, and I mentioned it to you before, this council meant, uh, I wanted to publicly do it for the monthly reports that have been coming. They're very detailed. I now know if anyone comes to me, I can give specifics without having to go to you or have them go to you. Um, and, uh, so I won't, I won't do what a former counselor did about ten, fifteen years ago and go through, why are there three robberies this month? I won't do that, but I'll just take one thing because, uh, I'm personally kinda curious about it. Uh, how are negotiations going with the Indian Hill Country Club? I noticed you generally mentioned.
Yeah, so we, we had a meeting with them maybe a month ago, um, and they raised some concerns about some of the details. It's back with the lawyers. Um, but I think it was a really productive meeting. Um, it was really just at the margins about how their personal property as opposed to their real property, um, would be taxed. Um, and so just, just working out the details with lawyers, hopefully we'll have something signed in the next month or ready for council signature.
So it isn't a point to come to.
Yeah, I'd give it another month or two, but it's, it's, it's well on its way.
Okay, good. Thank you.
Uh, I have many. I took it down. I must have hit, must have hit the button, may I say?
All right. Any other questions for Jonathan? I'm gonna go to Council Liaison Committee Report. So I'm taking councilors.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, sure, I'll just share a couple of things. Um, uh, Councilor Padreco and I attended the last Economic Development Commission meeting. Um, uh, and I had to step out, so Councilor Padreco feel welcome to, to share additional details, but uh, the EDC continues to discuss their hobby odyssey idea. I know that they're gonna, uh, we just received an email today as liaisons, that that will be a continued discussion come their next meeting. Uh, and that is very exciting. They're also identifying some various funding sources to support that program. Uh, and, uh, and that's wonderful. Um, and they're also discussing, continuing to discuss this, uh, letter to business owners throughout the town um, to welcome them to the town, to celebrate an anniversary, to do other things like that, and just generally provide more outreach to local businesses, which is wonderful. And, uh, that's all I have. Well, I, I'll also share, there's a ribbon cutting tomorrow for PGA Coffee. Um, in the vein of economic development, certainly folks should feel welcome to come out to that and welcome a great new business to our community.
Good vibrant.
High PM.
Councilor Mackey?
Just on behalf of the parade committee, I would thank the council for their support and, and coming out to the parade and taking that long march. It gets longer every year.
You did a great job directing it.
It's, so I, I, again, I think it's the important part. It's, it's like I, I talked to Jonathan, he's his first parade and it's like a, a small town. Just every, either everybody marches or everybody watches, one of the others. It's one of the other. You march, you watch, or sometimes you march and watch. And, um, it's just a small little town thing. It's nothing fancy, but I think it's a, a good way.
Wonderful.
To start off the, the, the summer season, although what really was summer weather, could have asked for better weather. Um, but I think it's important, and I think staying with the, the rose ceremony afterwards, I think is important because it's, I always think it's important that, that at least once a year, those thirty men, um, they gave their lives, at least their name gets spoken once, once a year out loud. Uh, and we don't forget their, their names. And so I think it's important that we, we remember them um, at least once a year. Actually, we remember them more than that. At least once a year, their names are spoken out loud and, and, uh, I think that's, that's, you know, it was good to see all that many, um, young people that came out to remember the parade and it was, those could.
Thank you, Councilor. Council W. Marata?
Yeah, I'm, well, I'm, I don't feel like as though I'm in a position to make many comments, so I'm going to look to Council Gonzalez, um, uh, Mayor Trister and myself, Council Gonzalez and, and, uh, other folks from Newington, um, attended the Iwo Jima Memorial Ceremony, was it yesterday?
Yes.
Yes.
It's all of blur.
I know.
Yes. Um, I just found it, it was the first time I had ever really got, gone on the site and been part of that and, um, it just, I, I found it was very moving and, um, really opened my eyes to, you know, what that, I kind of knew the history vaguely, but I don't know. I don't mean to put you on the spot, but
Yeah, no.
since you are, you are now very, very much involved with this and you appreciate that.
Yeah, um, it's, it's a great, um, it's, it's a beautiful monument. Um, it was a beautiful ceremony and I will keep people updated as more and more, um, things are coming up with Iwo Jima. I think that it would be nice to have more of a Newington presence there from everywhere. It's not a political thing. It's, so I would love to have more Republicans, more Democrats, more community, everybody show up, so I can definitely keep everybody posted on that.
Thank you.
And it's all done by volunteer work and donations. It's not supported by this town, it's not supported by New Britain. Um, it's all donations, so.
Councilor Nagel?
Uh, since we've gone a little bit beyond liaisons to committees, uh, I wanna recognize that we all in one way or another have met each other and met the town in a variety of ceremonies and meetings that, uh, recognize and celebrate a variety of different people in town, including the Scholarship Breakfast, which was recently held, uh, the Senior Center Volunteer Dinner, um, uh, the, um, not just the parade, but also the ceremony for, ceremonies for our veterans. Um, uh, the Historical Society Annual Meeting and, and Recognition that happened. Uh, Human Services is going to have one, I believe, on, on the fifth, so it's really a busy time for this town. And I'm so glad we're able to. And I'm so glad we're able to recognize those people that do so much for this town or should be recognized as this kind of, specifically in terms of our youth, in terms of recognition of what they have accomplished academically. And it's, it's good that all of us can recognize and celebrate all these diverse things that are happening at this time of year and all year, but specifically this time of year. So we're all, we've all been kept quite busy and positively so.
That's right. I don't end. Deputy Marata?
Yes, speaking of the historical society, I know Counselor Madreco himself and Counselor Nabel were at that annual meeting. I just want to congratulate Counselor Nabel, who is now the new president of the Newington Historical Society. And just a brief conversation that I had with Jim Lake, who is the outgoing president, new vice president of the historical society. And when I mentioned to him, you know, this is the first time I've ever been in the Calogetta House. Well...
Oh, boy.
Contact, contact me and he said, I would be happy to give you a, you know, a tour. And I know, I think Counselor Gonzalez is interested, so, you know, if anybody's interested, I plan on reaching out to him and taking him up on that opportunity. So I'm looking forward to it and anybody else, just let me know, get in touch and we'll, we'll go over and meet with him and he can tell us everything he knows, along the little nooks and crannies in the Calogetta House.
Any other clear liaison reports? Seeing none. Right along to public participation for the second time in the room, let's speak about participation, please stop for the microphone station, aim and aim for the record. We will presume T G three scan function and we do have one over Zoom, we're going to start there. You can win your way up up this town, you can, don't, don't worry about that. We're going to start on Zoom, uh, go right ahead, Ms. Lyons, I think. Long time no hear from her.
Hi, Rose Lyons, 46 Alton Drive. I have to admit, I didn't hear the whole conversation about the naming of the OFI building, but just an observation after watching many meetings over the last fifteen years where they went back and forth about nens, not nens, carrying the names of the, some of the rooms from the old town hall into the new town hall. And the only one I've seen so far is the Helen Nelson Room that got transferred over. I wonder, just for curiosity, and I know you don't answer questions at this point, why do we have to name the OFI building something other than the town hall annex? Because that seems to me that's exactly what it's going to be. And I think it was Counselor Madreco that mentioned it's kind of inaccurate to name it anything, not knowing what's going in there. I question why we even have to name it. Thank you.
Thank you.
We're not commending Rose Lyons, Rose, I was thinking.
You're fresh.
Just kidding.
Tom Tallard, 32 Edmund Street. Meeting the mayor, deputy mayor.
How are you?
And everybody on the council. You had a request for naming 28 Garfield Street. Could I make a request for a name now at this time?
Yeah, sure.
You're welcome to.
This is your...
This is your time.
Yeah. Okay, you kids don't know, but my brother was the, his name was Tom and he was the assistant town manager. He also was a town councilman and he worked for the park and rec department. And he received a grant from the government for the park and rec department. If you don't know, this picture with his kids is down the hallway. He received a commendation for his work with the park and rec. And as I said, he was, he was assistant town manager. And he wrote, like I said, the grant, which was something amazing. And if you're looking for a name for 28 Garfield Street, I was thinking of Tom Tallard Way, in honor of my brother, like I said, his picture is down the hall, you can learn more about him down there. And I just wanted to comment about Donald Trump. He said, "Happy Memorial Day." What's the matter with this guy? I remember my mom telling me my, my uncle came back from World War II. He was shaking, smoking two packs of cigarettes a day. He drank constantly. And he died of heart failure on the operating table. He was 66. There's nothing happy about Memorial Day. Thank you.
Thank you for the show.
Anybody else in that room, I presume, that would like to speak about participation? Tom, the other one, the council? Any other comments from councils? Counselor Plord?
Thank you, Mayor. I'll just mention one thing that I didn't get the chance to mention before, which is that I and dozens of former students and staff and teachers and community members had the great honor of honoring the retiring music teacher at the high school, Christopher Clark, on Friday of last week in a beautiful show, cabaret show and speeches compiled by staff that evening. And it, Mr. Clark had a real significant impact on me and continues to today, has had that impact on generations of students in his 20 years of teaching at the high school, 34 years of teaching period. And one thing we were able to do, working with the Board of Education, was to name the stage after Mr. Clark, the Christopher Clark stage. And just wanted to put to council's attention that a plaque will be erected and that dedication will happen and certainly we'll look forward to welcoming the entire council there to, to congratulate him on his retirement.
I heard it was an amazing event.
It really was.
Yeah, yeah.
Counselor Teniakas?
I just want to thank everyone who came out and participated tonight and I wanted to take the opportunity to say, "Go Knicks."
Do you have a score?
No. No.
I have no view either.
Any other remarks from counselors? All right, informational items.
Yes.
So I would end with a note.
So.
Counselor Mackey, second by Counselor Gonzalez, any discussion? Seeing none, favorite adjournment? Right, let's carry on, second here returned, 8:40 p.m.
Is that a record?
No, it's, it's not.
Really?